Good evening and welcome to the Chaska City Council meeting for Monday, January 6, 2010. We'll call the meeting to order at 7:04. Will you please stand and join me in a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you. Sorry, we're running a little late here. We had some reports from our department heads and we just got behind a little bit. So with that, I want to move on quickly. Just, we are going to have a little bit of a different meeting tonight. Anyone that's tuning in right now, we are going to open this meeting up, do a couple things, but then we are going to recess because we are going to do interviews and our first one is scheduled at 7:10. So we're not going to go very far into the meeting before we recess. And then when we are done with the interviews roughly at 8:20, we will be back. So I hope you can hang with us and come back with us around 8:20, 8:30 depending if we get behind a little bit. So we'll be back and we'll finish out the rest of the meeting. So with that, Nate, we call Ruhl, please.
Yes, Councilmember Hatfield.
Here.
Councilmember Hubbard.
Here.
Councilmember Wong.
Here.
Here. Moves us to item number four, adopting the agenda. Are there corrections or additions to the agenda? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Hubbard, second by Councilmember Wong to adopt the agenda discussion. Trying to do too many things. Hearing that, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same side. Motion carries. All right, that moves us on to visitor presentation. Is there anyone here that is here for visitor presentation? Okay. With that, I think we're just going to go ahead and move into the recess for interviews.
You know, I would suggest one thing. If we could get through consent agenda, because we do have somebody here for consent agenda item.
Okay.
If we could just go through that, then I think everything else is, everything else is just our own business.
Okay. So we'll, we'll again alter the agenda and we will move to item number eight for consent agenda items. And again, consent agenda items are items that we have to approve but don't necessarily need a conversation on, but we certainly have the ability to pull anything out or have a conversation. So with that-
Mayor, was your intent to go back to the previous meeting minutes and approve those later?
Well, I'd have to do that later, yeah.
Well, we'll go back to them afterwards.
That's why I'm kind of checking so I know where I've been. So when we come back. Is that, that's okay though, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. All uncovered. So with that, I'm going to open up. If there's anyone that has any comments or questions regarding consent.
One question.
Okay.
For item eight, oh, eight, or what's that one? It got changed. Trustees, newspaper, attorney. Yeah, the, yeah, I think it's 80, the designation, the, no, sorry, the, which one was that?
Time of approving a lot?
No, there's one for the signatories. Which one was that? Oh, yes, yeah, the signatories, right. This is 80. So like the signatories for the city depositories and institutions offer as signatories. So it lists the mayor, the city administrator, and the city treasurer, right?
Yep.
Should this mayor per ten be included on that list?
The mayor per ten is automatically included on it if the mayor is not present or not able to attend to it. They basically take over all the duties that the mayor would.
Okay.
All right. Anyone else have any comments or?
I was looking for the lot split. I mean, I kind of read through everything, but I'd like to hear in other language a little bit, a little, you know, short little summary like what's going on there. Sounds like both property owners are on top of it, everything like that. I was just looking for a little bit of a verbal explanation versus just reading through kind of what's going on there and the purpose of it.
Yeah.
Oh.
Do you need an explanation, sir?
Why don't you hang on?
It's actually probably, so Liz is the one that did this item and she's not here.
Right.
And so it's probably better to have these guys.
Okay, and that's fine. If you would, for our records, just state your name and address.
My name is Eric Ruhl. I live-
Will you do me a favor, please? Would you just pick that microphone up? Thank you. And then just speak perfect. You're right.
Sure. My name is Eric Ruhl. I'm the general manager at Hazeltine National Golf Club. I live at 9200 Red Oak Drive.
Okay.
And I'm Lyle Orwig and I live at Florida Birdie Lane.
All right. So if you could maybe just give the council a little background on, doesn't have to go real deep, but just a little bit of what exactly happened.
Sure. Lot five on Birdie Lane, Hazeltine National Golf Club owns. Lot four has been owned by Mr. Orwig for a year and a half, year and, and there was an encroachment of a stone wall and steps on the, be the east side of your property.
Southeast side.
Southeast side. And to clean that encroachment up, we agreed to a lot swit, or a land swap, basically to fix that problem. We picked up, Hazeltine National picked up land at the northwest side and, or excuse me, at this-
Northeast side.
Northeast side. And we swapped land on the southwest side for Mr. Orwig. So we both agree to it. We have no problem with it. We had a little go around just to make sure that it fit for future development of lot five if that ever occurred, but we are both in agreement with the lot swit, swap.
And I think from the city's standpoint, what we want to make sure when there's a lot split like this is that you're not creating non-conforming lots. And so that's the big, the big thing that we look for on that is if we have that type of request, that we're not all of a sudden creating something that's non-conforming. So from our perspective, doing this helps them clean up things that clean up their property, but it also provides us with two conforming lots within our zoning origins.
So, but is the main, is the main purpose because of that storm pipe running there and the issue that we had?
That's something else we can clean up through this, but that wasn't the thing that precipitated.
So is it just straightening the lots out? Because I just don't see where there's a big, I can see where lot five gives a, I assume that orange meant that it's going to lot five now, that that gives them a little more room on that, on that front side because it's kind of narrow at the street side.
Right. It's just an exchange of a thousand square feet.
Right.
On one end to the other end is all it really is.
Okay.
And there's an odd angle near Birdie Lane due to the fact that we needed to keep the lot conforming for future development.
And apparently you're both in agreement, so really at that point, as long as it meets all of our zoning stuff, we should be good with it. But yeah, I was a little curious because it's such a small, little slimmer of land that it's, it just seems like it could have been a lot of work, but apparently there's, there's definitely value. And I know that we had that big storm issue there with that, with that storm pipe run through there a number of years ago.
Well, and a lot of times when you see these oddities on lots, the reason that they become corrected is because somebody recently has purchased it. And they don't really become an issue until somebody goes through the title work and sort of looks at that. And so that's, occasionally we have these types of issues pop up where they're really not huge issues, but, but typically the sale of a property will end up sort of triggering that type of change.
Okay. All right.
It's a surprise you find out.
Except there's no party with it. It costs money.
Right, exactly.
And when we were doing this is when we talked to the city about formalizing the easement for the storm sewer, which is entirely on lot five.
Because we've, apparently we've always had that easement in there. It was just-
It's never been a recorded.
It's never been a recorded easement. That's, that's why, that's why we're able to take care of that at the same time.
Okay. All right. So win-win for everybody.
Yes.
Absolutely.
All right. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, that's perfect.
Anyone else, any questions while they're here? All right. Well, thank you. Thank you both for coming. I appreciate it. I know you only had to be here for a short term, but appreciate it.
No problem.
Thank you. Thank you.
For adjusting your agenda.
All right. Any other questions on consent? If not, I don't believe I have a motion yet at this point. Correct? Nope?
I'll move.
Motion by Councilmember Wong. Second by Councilmember Hatfield. Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same side. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. All right. Now, we are going to go into recess and do interviews. And we are going to ask, I think we clear, right? We don't have other folks?
We, we can't require people to, but we've asked out of courtesy in the past if people are interviewing, if they can wait outside.
Yeah. We'd appreciate that. And our first one-
So Dan, we'll let you kick out your wife.
Yeah. You tell her, Dan, I'm not. And while we're getting ready here, I-
What we'll do is we'll come get people as the interviews are-
Before we go off the air, I got one thing here. Tonight at 8:20, now this is, if you know military time, eight o'clock is 200 hours, okay? So tonight at 8:20 and 20 seconds, it'll be 20, 20, 20, 20, 20. You'll never see it again in your lifetime. So all right, at home, set your alarm clocks. I don't think we, we'll be back in time. So, all right. With that, we're going to go into recess and we're going to start interviews.
You didn't say what was...
All right, and we are back. Thanks for waiting for us. I hope you came back to join us. Did you get to take a time to do the 2020-2020? I forgot all about it. We were so engrossed in our interviews, we missed it totally.
We lived through it.
We lived through it though. We'll never see it again, remember that.
You don't know that. It could be a fountain of youth.
Look at how much younger we look since our recess, right? Or is it the other way?
Were we supposed to make a wish or something?
All right. Okay, so we are going to get back on track. So we go back to, we are at... All right. Okay, so we are going to get back on track. So we go back to, we are at, there's no one here under visitor presentation. So now we'll move to item six, approving previous meeting minutes. Again, if there are no corrections or additions, that entertainer motion.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Grau.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hubbard to approve the meeting minutes. Discussion. Hearing that all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same size. Number seven was the interviews. We did that. Number eight is consent. We are done. Moves us on to item number nine of action items. Is adopting resolution 2020 dash two establish parameters for sale and issuance of bonds.
Mayor, Councilmember, the item in front of you tonight is actually in relation to the community park we talked a little bit about during the interview process. We have a 55 acre parcel that we've purchased most of since 2017. It is our next community park location adjacent to a future elementary school site. So the parcels that we purchased end up being the right of way to get road from, from Big Woods Boulevard down to this parcel, along with all the parcels that make up the 55 acres. At the same time that we entered into a purchase agreement and purchased our first parcels, the school district did purchase the parcel, which is just over six acres. That was for, or is for a future elementary school. The last parcel that we have is parcel number nine, which is basically the last third of the park, which we are scheduled to close on. On February 4th of this year, at that point, we will have all the parkland acquired for our community park in southwest Chaska. As part of the process of doing this, so this park is really supported by all the parkland dedication charges that will come in over the course of the development of this area of southwest Chaska, so both on the east and west side of the freeway. And so one of the things that we want to do is to have the, the actual dollars that support the purchase of this match up better from a cash flow perspective with when the parkland dedication charges come in. And so we are recommending that we finance this acquisition. So this would both be to refund the acquisitions we've had to date and then also to refund the pending transaction after the last third, February 4th. And then as those dollars come in and parkland dedication charges as development occurs, and that would support the debt service for the parkland parcel here. We did do an analysis when we first started the southwest Chaska area and over the entire development area, there was enough dollars to support both the purchase of the property. And I think it was, I think it was like $5 million of development costs that went towards the actual park itself. So the item tonight is more of a financing item. I just wanted to give sort of a background on what it's for. Knowles here, our administrative service director, to talk a little bit about the process that's being recommended for actually financing this and what this resolution would be for tonight.
So, and before Noel starts, so, so have we already closed on, on parcels one, two, four, five, seven, 10?
Yep. So we closed on, I think, one, one, two, and four back in 2017, and then five, seven, and 10 in 2018, and then 2009, 2020 now would be the last portion of it.
So, so we've paid for, obviously had to pay for all these in front already.
Yep. So we've, so in essence, we've used available cash on hand to do this. We'd, it doesn't make sense for us to take that cash out of cash flow when these dollars are going to be coming in through parkland charges over the course of the, of the development. So in essence, what will happen is we'll reimburse ourselves for, for basically the internal loan that we made to be able to close on these to begin with.
Because now by closing on there, is this development still a few years away, correct?
Well, this, so the parkland charges are from the entire southwest.
No, and I, and I understand that, but as far as any immediate development there, that's still.
You're talking about the park itself.
Around, well, just even around that area that would drive, because there's no roads, there's no.
I wouldn't necessarily say that's, I think now that the interchange is in, I think you're going to see things happen relatively quickly.
I mean, I kind of personally thought that, you know, if the referendum passed and the school came in, obviously we would go on high gear because that would open that area up right away.
I think it's still going to happen.
Still going to happen.
Yeah. Now, one of the things that I think changes potentially in the way we approach development of the park is we might approach how we develop that park differently based on when the elementary school goes in. So it might be that, that, you know, I would envision, in fact, Marshall's going through the process of sort of starting this up with the park board of going through a master planning process to get sort of the public input on what this park should look like. I think one of the things that we're going to have to look at is, do we build it all at once or do we phase it? And I think that's really going to be determined based on how we see development happen out there, but also what are the needs? Remember, this is a community park, so what needs do we have out there in the community that we currently can't meet? You know, one that I think has become a glaring obvious issue over the last, since the dome went up, is the lack of baseball fields within, in the community. We only have one field that's for little kids or for youth baseball that actually has a grass infield now, which is out at, at community park. And that's put a significant strain on our, our baseball association. So we might go through and actually do a master plan and say, well, let's phase this based on, on how this happens. So it might be that we focus on some when the elementary school builds and some might be done before then because we feel like there's more of a need. I think the key is, though, is going to be coming up with a master plan to say, when it's all said and done, this is what it's going to look like.
Because that's what I, this is our last shot for Chaska. This is, this is the premier big park. And my bigger concern is, do we have enough land? And, and do we think, or do we think about maybe, is there another 10 acres there to make it that park? That, how many times are we as, as parents now, me as a grandparent, that goes to Eden Prairie to their big park? And you go to these parks and host these tournaments to draw thousands of people in the, into your community, are we there? And I just, I want to make sure that, and I know this is off topic of where we're at tonight, but it's, it's still all about making sure that that's what we're doing with this park. Because that's what I've been kind of hearing for the last 15, 20 years, that when this park develops, it's going to have all these. And 55 acres, I know is huge, but it's not, to me, it's just not that big if we want to do everything we want to do.
It's significantly bigger than community park, but it's a little bit smaller than, than the Miller Park up in Eden Prairie. It's about in between. I wouldn't necessarily say that there isn't another opportunity. One of the things that we've talked about in the past, I think, is a potential, especially if you're talking about big, open playfields, is we do have a lot of greenbelt area around the community that you could potentially keep green and utilize.
As parks.
As parks. And so I, I, I think it'd be premature to say that there's absolutely no opportunity in the future. I think that there is, but this is the, to me, this is the biggest last planned one that we have.
Because I, I think that of the cities, as you go east, we're probably the only city that doesn't have that large park. You know, I mean, we, a community is, is, is a nice sized park, but it's not that one that's, you know, they can, they do, or they are able to host tournaments, but not, not those big ones that, that really draw. And I, I don't know if there are good things or bad things, but I just know that.
That's going to be, I think, part of the process is going to, you know, so these processes, typically we have these youth associations involved in that process to sort of get from them, what do they see as needs in the community, you know, do an inventory of what we have, look at what other communities have, look if there's gaps in our system of things that we don't have that most communities do. There's a, and there's just a general input process from the public. You know, I think one of the things that we're looking at with this park that I think is a unique opportunity is how we potentially do something to preserve those big woods there that you could potentially look as an extension of that park and maybe have more areas that attract more than just youth sports to the, the park there. Maybe become more of an outdoor education component there, so.
Well, I know we've talked about, you know, renaming a piece of that Schumlin, you know, to return that back. And with his education or being on the school board, that, that would be a good tie for that. You know, and I, like I said, I just know that we've had these and I just, I just, I guess I just want to throw my last ditch effort out there to make sure that we're doing as much as we. And I, I still think that if we maybe organize the park in a way that we can't utilize the school and their parking lot because their parking lots in the evenings, or, or, you know, the, the park park would be needed in the evenings and the school needs to turn the day to try to do that. And their open space, maybe we could incorporate or we put the playground on that system there, and then that opens up more acreage for other things here. It's just that whole, and I know we're really good about that, but I know with, with the not passing the referendum, that all of a sudden now changes.
I think we can, I think we can't approach the planning any different as if it passed or if it didn't pass. I think we.
Well, if it passed, we'd be moving faster.
We would, but from a planning perspective, I think we have to assume that someday there's going to be an elementary school there.
Right.
And that we need to design that to be able to accommodate that and to do exactly that, to not waste space in the future by, by inefficiently using the land that's there. Because the other thing I think we need to think about is, there's also a balance on economics too. And, you know, really looking at what are the parkland charges that we think we generate over the course of that development? How much do you need to actually purchase the land? Because if we didn't have this purchase, we'd have it donated. But if we had donated, then they wouldn't be paying parkland charges. And so, you know, so it's really looking at a balance between how much, how much do we purchase? How much do we save to develop? And are we willing to put more than just our parkland dedication charges in?
I mean, I, I know that's, it's got to be a huge expense. I can't even envision what it would cost to develop that park. But I, like I said, I just, I just had to give that spiel.
I think it's a fantastic point, and I do think that that's going to be one of the biggest discussion items during that planning process. Because I think my gut tells me that the youth athletics associations are going to be very involved in that process. They're going to want to be very involved in that process.
The one comment I'll make when you talk about land, just to kind of say, like, do we have enough? I mean, the one thing that I've noticed that's interesting, living across the street from that space, is that if you look at the southwest Chaska master plan, there's another row, like a single row of houses that is planned to be developed, kind of right where the driveway for the farm fair is there. And that always seems strange because it's like seven houses if you look at the plots. And so when you think of like more land.
Seven houses.
I know. That's the balance, right? So, because I'm just trying to think like how attractive or what kind of developer comes in, you know, it'd have to be probably a custom small builder versus a larger builder. But you know, you throw out the idea like, do we have enough land? Like, to me, that always has looked a little, it would be doable because it's a road it goes through, but potential space that's, doesn't, you know, destroy a huge development opportunity.
It's just that, you know, we're, it's still there, and I know the park board really hasn't had the conversations on it that really start that. And, and I really hope that, and I think you said that it is going to start soon, those conversations. And I think that will help once we start seeing some ideas. Because right now I have no, I, I just don't have a clue.
And the last time that we really had any discussion on that was back in 2010, when we went through the process of actually developing the master plan for southwest Chaska. And at that point, it was really like 50,000 foot. It was like, oh, you could fit four baseball fields here and four soccer fields here. Now we're at detail time.
Right.
Now, now we're at the, the point where we really need to nail down exactly what space we have to work with, exactly how we fit it in, exactly how we deal with stormwater, all those things.
You knew enough to put signs up that says, maybe a lighted ball field. Because I remember, I remember seeing those signs.
Well, you have to do that.
I know, but I was, because I got asked that.
Because I said build a park before we develop it. It's a lot easier.
I was on the park where the time my neighbors is like, well, what's going there? It's like in the park, it's kind of like, we don't want to plant. Those signs are safe to put up because it's possible.
You have to. We'll still get yelled at when that park gets developed about lights. I mean, there's no doubt. Whoever's sitting in these chairs at that point, you will get phone calls mad about lights.
I'll just knock on my door if I'm still here.
Well, that just.
I am a personal victim of lighted ball fields. Thank you very much.
Victim. I think they're cool. Never a victim.
Unless it shines in your bedroom window.
Well, and that's, I mean, Carver just went through this with the, with their football fields that are on the west side of Carver Elementary is. That wasn't actually originally designed to be lit.
Right.
And then they put those lights in afterwards and, yeah, it's, there's no question. I mean, it's, it's a huge discussion item when, when that, when that comes up.
I remember us talking about that in 10, and we said, we got to get, either build it before the development, the park, or get some light, lights up, or, or get those signs so that there's no doubt that anybody didn't see it before they bought their house.
We saw it.
One thing I'll make sure when, when Marshall actually gets that process defined, he'll probably do it in some kind of a memo. I'll get it to you guys so that you guys sort of understand what process. Because quite frankly, as we think about big community projects, I mean, that's one of the biggest community projects that we're going to have coming up. So, I mean, I, I look at cities square west, the library and the park are, you know, they're, they're sort of our three big ones other than city facilities.
Okay, so let's say hypothetically that we said, you know, we're all good with this tonight and everything moves forward. But, you know, then we come back and say, you know what, 55 is great, but if we just had like another 10 acres in that same parcel, we could do this other one thing that we really wanted to do. Is there still opportunity to do that? Or is it we're locked in by the comp plan or by something else?
Well, you're never locked in by the, I mean, you, you guys can make the decision to do more. To me, it becomes much more of an economic decision.
It's economics. Because it's, because if all of a sudden we come looking for 10 more acres, we're going to pay a lot more.
It's, well, it's, it's a, it's a double edged sword because you're not only going to have to go and pay more for it, but you're also losing the parkland charges that come in to help support that parkland development. So you get, you get knocked by having to purchase it and lose the dollars.
Because the parkland you're getting between now till when it gets built. Otherwise, if you do it later, then you have to like figure out double the funding effectively.
Yeah.
Pay on both sides of it, right?
Yeah.
But if you put it in a front end, it's better, right?
I, what I think is best is what, is how we've planned, this is what it's going to be, and that we're going out and being proactive enough to be able to, to say, to implement this plan.
So, so the question then is, is it big? Do we feel comfortable that it's big enough?
Right, that's what Mark asked.
That's really the question.
Which is, which is goes back to your, that's your original question.
Which, we can have that discussion, but really is separate from this. Because.
No, and I kind of, I, I know that I, and I made Noel sit down, sorry about that.
He sat down 20 minutes ago.
It's just, I, I just wanted to do that to make sure just in case, whatever. I guess it's a matter of just saying it.
Yeah, I would suggest that if there is a real issue that comes up with space constraints, that's going to come up during that planning process. And then it's going to be a decision about what's, you know, are we willing to put more into this than what we're going to generate?
All right. And like, like I said, I kind of got off track, but if anyone else has a.
This is going to make Noel's job easy.
All right. Sorry, Noel. You're up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmembers. Matt is correct. What we're looking at here tonight is the issuance of financing to reimburse the city for costs that we have incurred to acquire the parkland in the southwest park area. There's one remaining parcel yet to be acquired, which will be completed this coming February. As a part of this financing, what's happening here is the city is not financing this itself. What the city is going to be doing is requesting the Chaska EDA to actually sell the bonds on behalf of the city. To facilitate that transaction, the city will acquire all this parkland, transfer to the EDA. The EDA will then agree to sell it back to the city over the 20-year term life of the bonds. The city will commit to pay annual installments to the EDA, and it's that payment from the city. And it's that payment from the city to the EDA that provides the revenue sources to repay these bonds. So the EDA will be acting as a conduit to help us finance these, these acquisition costs for the parkland. Now, it is a reimbursement transaction in terms of we have acquired most of the property. In fact, we have to acquire all of the property in the name of the city before we can do this financing. Because the city will then be able to transfer the property to the EDA. It would have been much more difficult to try to transfer individual parcels with individual owners and put this together. So one of the reasons we've delayed this financing to a reimbursement was to allow the city to acquire all the parcels to complete the financing. We've used our internal cash sources to carry this, but it's important that the city replenish those cash resources by issuing this debt. Now, when we've done public financing in the past, it's been for typical things like our street projects, which are supported by special assessments. Typically, we come to console and do a set sale resolution describing the project. We then go out for public bids and then we bring those bids back to console with the lowest bidder. Because this transaction does not have a geo pledge, in other words, there's no pledge of the taxing authority of the city. Because this is a reimbursement and it's a conduit between the city and the EDA, our municipal advisor Baker Tilly has suggested that we do this through a direct placement process. Which means instead of taking the public bids, we would work with an underwriter directly to place this bond. This way, the underwriter is a part of the structured process for the bonds. They understand the story behind what the city is doing. This is a similar approach that we have used in the past for other projects similar to this. When we financed the Fireman's Park project through direct placement with RW Baird, excuse me. In that particular project, we had two different bond sales. Each bond sale, we sold two bonds for a total of four bonds for that project. Before we did that, we did a competitive quote with various underwriters to identify their qualifications to do the bidding. And Robert Baird has demonstrated an ability to complete the deals. And Baker Tilly always compares the rates that the underwriter is proposing to the rates that they would expect in the market. We found them to be very competitive. So we approached Robert W. Baird to once again be the underwriter for this deal so that we could work with under, with our bond consul, the municipal advisor, the underwriter as a team to complete this financing. The other thing that's a little different with this particular resolution that the city is passing tonight is it's not a sale resolution, but it's what's called a parameters resolution. Because we're working on a negotiated basis and we're not sure when the property would close, it's scheduled for the 4th of February, but if it closes later, we wanted to have some flexibility to go into the market as soon as possible or if we saw an opportunity that would be good for us to be in the market. So the parameter resolution, what it does is it sets a limit on the maximum interest rate that the consul would be willing to accept. It sets a maximum par amount on how much we would need to issue these bonds. And then we'll authorize the mayor and the city administrator to be able to enter a purchase agreement with the underwriter to complete that bond sale.
As long as it meets the parameters.
As long as it's in compliance with those parameters. If, if the underwriter proposes a structure for sale that exceeds those parameters, then we would say, nope, we're not going to do this deal. So this gives the city maximum flexibility. It also allows us then to, like I said, be in the market on a timely basis. Once, once you pass the parameters resolution and if the sale is completed within those parameters, then the sale is complete. We would bring back on like February 24th is the tentative date, the results of those sales to console to inform you of what the results are. That's not a chance to say we don't want to do the financing at that point. It's very important that you understand the parameters resolution, if that's approved tonight, establishes the terms of the sale. If there was something we did not want to go forward with, then we'd want to say no to that resolution tonight. The second follow-up resolution just confirms the sale results after the fact. So I just want to make sure you have a clear understanding of the importance of what the parameters resolution is compared to a regular bond sale resolution.
Well, if I, I heard that right, if we approve this tonight, it just happens.
If you approve this tonight, you have created the conditions by which yourself, the mayor and Matt, if the parameters are within limits, could then sign off and complete the deal. If what the underwriter brings back exceeds those limits, then we would not sign off on this and we'd have to start the whole process.
If they come back within the parameters, we couldn't come, come back in the future and say, ah, we decided we don't want to do this anymore.
Okay.
If, if they fit within these parameters.
I knew you had said something I wasn't real clear on, but that's what that is.
Yep.
So, so they meet our parameters and we have to go through with it?
That is the intent here. So what we're trying to do here tonight is replenish our city cash reserves that we have used to finance this for the last two years. And so we're requesting that console consider adoption of this resolution. What you're doing is agreeing to ask the EDA to sell this debt. You're basically going to be entering into an agreement to promise to pay the EDA. And later tonight, when the EDA board meets, they'll be passing a parameters resolution that will establish the same parameters, authorizing issuance of the debt and then engaging with a trustee who will then manage all of the collection of the revenues and the payments of the debt service to secure the transaction for both the EDA, the city and the bondholders.
Yeah, what he said.
And staff is recommending we do this.
Wow, is this perfectly legal?
Yes, we have, we have reviewed this with, we have reviewed this with bond consul. They have helped us structure this transaction so that we could create the, the pledge of the city to, to, the city is pledging future revenues, not tax revenues, but future revenues. In this case, it'll be the park dedication fees to be paid to the EDA over the 20-year term of the bonds. And those payments to the EDA will then be used to pay the bonds.
So are park dedication fees handled kind of like tax levies where you define, you know, a certain pool, in this case, the bond that has to be repaid? And then the park dedication is split amongst all the developers around knowing that, okay, if you've held this much land, that is equivalent to this percentage of that, you know, this levy that needs to be repaid?
No.
Or is it?
So basically what it is, is you have the parkland dedication fees are paid based on acreage that the, and so it goes into one parkland dedication fund.
Yeah.
And that fund would first go to support debt that, that is existing before it would go to, to other things. So it's not like, so it's not like each development is putting a certain percentage towards it. It goes into our parkland dedication fund, which then supports the EDA payment or supports the payment to EDA so they can pay the debt.
Okay, so that means that if there's excess in the fund, any excess after repayment of this then can be used for other things?
Yeah, so, and, and that's why I pointed out at the beginning, when we first started doing development in Southwest Chaska, we looked at the total number of acres that would be developed. And then use that to be able to determine how, how much we would collect in parkland dedication charges. Some of it would go towards the actual purchase of the property, which is this, and some of it would actually go to the development of the property, which, I don't want to call it excess. It's, it's just, that's what the parkland dedication charges they pay would be and some of it will go to support the development of that park in the future.
So now that, that kind of leads me to two following questions, which is that is there any risk of the parkland dedication funds being insufficient to repay the bond?
Well, there's, you know, the, the risk that's always out there is if the state comes in and tells you you can't collect parkland dedication charges anymore. There's, there's always that risk. Now, I, you know, the, uh, I, yes, there's, there's always that risk that could happen. There's always a risk that development doesn't happen as fast as what needs to occur for, for payments to be made. So, yeah, there's always risks that that will occur. But in the current condition, I mean, parkland dedication charges are, I mean, they're a pretty established practice. But there's, there's always a risk that, that the state can take away our authority to be able to collect parkland dedication charges.
So let's say that speculatively, let's say that there's not a recession hits in the next, this year, let's say. That means that we could have a slowdown in development, which could impact our ability to repay this bond because there's just less development. Right. So what's our contingency?
Well, I'll say one thing, we've already paid for this with cash.
Right.
And so this is going to replenish some of that cash that we've already used to do that.
So we're basically just having to turn it around and pay that.
We've already been collecting parkland dedication fees from the other parcels that are finished.
Agreed, but there's still a payment scheduled against this bond that's open because we basically borrowed this money to repay ourselves. So now we have operating capital or operating the liquid funds, right?
Absolutely.
So the question is, is that.
I would say that the risk is greater though with how we have it structured now because we've in essence tied up our cash in something that's not supported by where the revenues are trying to support.
Which means we have less liquidity to be able to do other things we need to do, such as like get road salt or whatever, that's right. So, but if the, if the situation arose or contingency for, let's say, like a slowdown in economies, to take our liquid funds and then put that back in there as repayment against that bond fund? To make sure that the bond fund was repaid.
That's what we'd have to do. If, if we found that development charges weren't keeping up with the debt service, if there was a recession, then we'd have to go back to doing exactly what we've already done. Is take whatever liquid funds we have to pay it. And then as the parkland dedication charges came in, then we'd, we'd use that to refund that.
Okay.
So, and I know that some of this was plotted out back in 2010 before interchange was added. Now, with that being industrial across the way, does that change? No?
No, because when we did the analysis, we always assumed, I mean, the comp plan always called for that being industrial.
Okay.
And so it doesn't change the acreage, it doesn't change the use. So the only thing it would potentially do is, is increase the speed at which it actually came in.
Because I didn't know if that's one of them that you have to base it on what you know today, not what you're thinking in the future. So I just, I just didn't know if that changed things, that all of a sudden now it's industrial, that there's more funds would be coming in.
No, no, we always assumed that that stuff on the west side was going to be industrial. The only way it would get, be different is, you know, you know, there's a different rate that industrial pays than residential pays. And so the only way it'd be different is if you change land use types. Or if you decide, or if a future council decided that instead of 500 acres, we're only going to develop, allow 250 to be developed. That would cause an issue. Yeah, so I mean, there's all kinds of things like that that can happen. I think the key here is, is that this is consistent with the plan that we've had. Right now, we already have our liquid capital tied up in this and so this allows us in essence to allow us to take dollars that were never intended to go towards the payment of this park to be able to get refunded and then be able to pay back with those parkland dedication charges as they come in.
And the bonds do have a call provision, so if for some reason develop, development accelerated and we had collected park funds, you know, to pay off the bonds early, we would have that option in the future.
Does that, does that help us financially against the cost of the bonds or does it, does that not change if we call early?
We, we have a call provision, I think it's, I think eight years and that's very typical of the market. And typically the underwriter and the municipal advisor say that there's no additional cost on the interest rate that we would pay to have that. If we shorten that call to maybe five or three years, we would pay a significant premium through a higher interest rate to have that. Basically, when you have a call provision, if you're doing a 20-year bond, a lot of people look at it as the average life on this is probably going to be about 10 years. If there's an eight-year call, I'm going to consider an eight-year bond. And so they're going to price it as if it's an eight-year bond.
And I think it's, I think it'd be very difficult for me to imagine anything happening sooner than eight years. But on the flip side, I think within 20 years, I think we'll probably see most of the land maybe not built upon, but developed. And it's the development of the property that actually triggers these charges.
Anyone else? All right, so you need a motion to adopt Resolution 2020-2 approving the issuance of taxable full-term installment purchase revenue bond, Series 2020A by the Economic Development Authority of the City of Chaska and authorizing an installment sale agreement and related documents.
That is correct. You're asking.
How do I do with that?
Well, you got everything.
That's what it says. Action required. I didn't write it, you wrote it.
I did.
No, I didn't write it.
Whoops, looking, oh, you're good? Oh, okay, you were looking like, so if there are no further questions, then that's what I'm looking to motion for. And I don't want really care to repeat all that if we don't.
So moved.
If we don't have to. So I have a motion by Councilmember Wong.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Gra, and I'm going to do the shortened version. I have adopt Resolution 2020-2 establish parameters for sales and issuance of bonds. Discussion. I think we pretty well hit most of the topics. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. All right, moves this on to item 9B, purchase agreement for property 4255 Creek Road.
So Mayor and Councilmember, this is another, this is a, thank you, this is another big one for Southwest Chaska. This has to do with purchasing property that we're going to need to connect Savannah Road to the north and be able to connect it up to where existing Creek Road is now, which will eventually then bring it all the way up to where the medical center is by Engler and Clover Ridge Drive. So this is our major east-west or north-south collector road on the west side of town. Currently, we do not have a major collector road on the west side of town, so this, this is a pretty critical piece of infrastructure for us as we, as we move into the future. I'm going to have Nate present this. The, just because we're purchasing this now doesn't mean that we're building this road now. Nate will talk a little bit about the why the timing of us doing this now, why we're recommending to move forward with being able to secure this property at this point.
All right, Mayor and council members, as Matt mentioned, the property that we're talking about tonight is referred to as the Cottrell Property. It is located at 4255 Creek Road. Highlighted on this exhibit right here, you see Creek Road flows up this way from downtown, goes underneath 212 and then eventually connects, connects up to County Road 10 or Engler Boulevard. What we're talking about here is the need to purchase this property, which would allow the extension of Savannah Way headed north to connect to Creek Road, which then allows for an underpass of 212 that currently exists by using Creek Road and then following back up to Engler through the extension of, I always forget what we call this.
Savannah Way.
This is, no.
Chaska Creek Boulevard.
Yes. So which would then, then provide a north-south connection connecting Engler all the way to Big Woods Boulevard and then eventually continuing south to the community park and the elementary school in the future. So for this property here, what we've agreed to and negotiated with the property owner over the course of the last year is to pay the property owner $1,260,000 for the property, approximately 10-acre parcel. We'd also pay $40,000 in total relocation, which is spelled out in the purchase agreement that's attached to this memo as well, or the staff memo in this agenda item. The, the purchase price staff believes is a reasonable deal, given the appraised value for the property was $1.17 million. And so we're, we're close there on this agreement. In addition to that, there's significant relocation that could occur, that the property owner has just, has decided that they aren't going to be requiring of the city as a result of this agreement. What's currently located on the property is a residential home, but there's also a business that's operated out of there called TPI Specialties. They do some manufacturing work of some high-end components for.
Race cars.
Race cars and sports cars. And so the relocation of some of that equipment and what they do, if we were to pursue that in a different type of a deal, could expose the city to much more costs than what we're talking about through this arrangement. One of the reasons that we're currently looking to purchase this property is because it's necessary for this connection to happen. We need, we need to be able to locate the, the road extension through this, this parcel. That's been identified for a long time as part of the plan for the Southwest Growth Area. But in addition to the road right of way, we also need the property, this portion of the property for stormwater retention. So there, there is a need on the city's side for the timing component of it, although we're not looking to build the road immediately. Really relates to the ownership of the property. It's it's owned by, was owned by an individual named Myron Cottrell. He recently passed away, and so the property is now controlled by his wife, who is in failing health as well. And so, the family is looking to, you know, get the estate kind of taken care of, knowing that the city needs to purchase this property, if the timing is right for us to to enter into a deal with them.
What is the purpose, what the retention ponding, what is that for? Is it just for the road?
Yes.
Yep, yep. So, the.
There's two pieces of retention pond there. One of them is public, which is the stuff that Nate pointed to down on the bottom, close to Creek Road. The other part is, we have the opportunity to be able to sell this. The thing you're not seeing on this map is there's a huge hill.
Right.
That goes up. And on top of it is the back of the, where he's pointing now is the back of Traditions neighborhood. They need that to be able to accommodate all their ponding up on their property. So, we have the opportunity to sell back a portion of this to Traditions to be able to meet their ponding requirements for private ponding. So, in the end, we'll be able to sell some portion of this parcel off, and we won't need all of it. But the stuff on the bottom is related to our road.
We get to hold them hostage like we get held hostage on different things? I know the answer, move on. Traditions has been pretty good to work with.
They've been very good to work with, yeah.
I just didn't understand what the the stormwater that we needed there, because all we're doing is the road. So, that's why I wasn't sure.
Yep, and well, it's part of the elevation change too that occurs. So, as the road is coming down, you know, the water is naturally going to be going this direction as well, which is why this is a good location.
But it's not, it's not the ponding for the development above.
No.
That's the stuff up above.
Yep.
What we have constructed for road plan improvements and things like that, we have not satisfied our stormwater needs for even a portion of, portion of the road that is built today. What you see in the ponding that's listed down below will fully satisfy just the collector road.
Okay.
Will also taking account portions of segment of Creek Road, so.
The portion of Creek Road that is essentially between or underneath 212, between the Chaska Creek Boulevard and Savannah Way, portions of that will also be credited into the ponds that we would build as a part of this collector road.
So, it's more crediting the Savannah Way than it is the Creek Road?
For what it is that the city would have to build as a part of the transportation system, that's what the ponding will support.
For Savannah?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
Okay. So, to move into some of the details of how the closing would occur and the timing of things, I want to outline that for you as well. Right now, per the purchase agreement, we've got the closing scheduled to occur as soon as March 2nd, 2020, or when the property is vacated, which must be honored before June 1st, 2020. So, currently, like I mentioned before, the property is used for TPI Specialties. They're they're continuing to operate out of there. They have not yet vacated the property. So, what we're saying is if they are vacated, we would close as soon as March 2nd. What we understand, working with the property owner, is that that's very unlikely to occur. And they have said that by June 1st is is a more likely date for that to occur. What we're saying from the city perspective is that we have no interest in becoming a landlord, you know, for a tenant-type situation if TPI Specialties is going to continue to remain there. So, our desires for that property to be vacated at the at the point in time that we close, which is why we'd be willing to wait until June 1st for the closing to occur. Given the fact that we don't have an imminent plan, imminent plan to be building the road and the stormwater retention and all of that this year, it makes sense that we're waiting for the property to be vacated so that we're not getting into that sort of a tenant relationship with with TPI Specialty.
So, there's a possibility they could move out early and then we just go ahead and close her.
Yeah, if they move out earlier, it is possible that we could maybe move up the the closing date.
That 40,000, then that helps cover their relocation expenses.
Yes.
And would it be that they'd have to be out by June 1st?
Yes. Yep.
Have they identified a new location yet?
I think they're working on that. You know, their future is to, exactly how that's going to work out is something that they they're going to have to determine. But yeah, I know that they're talking about that. The other detail that I do want to make you aware of is upon signing the purchase agreement, so that's the decision that's in front of us tonight, is, you know, is approval from the the council to allow the mayor or authorize the mayor and Matt to sign the purchase agreement, we would be putting $100,000 into escrow and $20,000 would be paid to the owner directly as earnest money. So, that's basically us saying, yes, we will close come June 1st, assuming all contingencies are taken care of, which is really that vacancy by TPI Specialties of the site. Those dollars are non-refundable should the city not close by June 1st. Now, as I say that, one of the contingencies is that TPI Specialties is vacated from the site. Should they not do that by June 1st?
They can't use that as a reason not to.
Yeah, we would, we would get those dollars back.
Okay, they they can't like relinquish and decide that they don't want to do it.
No, once, once we have the purchase agreement in place, that that ensures that we'll close on it.
Okay.
Especially with the earnest money in place. And actually, the business that's there is not the same as the property owner.
Oh, okay. All right.
They were related. Myron had a business that was there, but it was separate from the estate for the property itself.
And what's there, I mean, obviously, the property owners are in failing health, but the the business owners, are they?
So, the business owner continues to be the family at this point. So, the estate essentially owns the business.
Okay.
It's it's a really weird, it's a really weird setup where the.
The employees kind of own the business.
The employees sort of own the business.
But they're like motivated to to go through.
Yeah, so if we get the purchase, if we get the purchase agreement in place, then that ensures that we'll be able to close on the property. Our real concern too is that, and this is something that Larry Harrison, Luke's office, has really brought up as a concern, is if we, you know, you could look at a situation where we would actually go in and close on the property and then just have a lease agreement back with the business owners to to lease from us until June 1st. You always run the risk that they're not going to leave, and you also potentially run the risk that they could try to make another relocation claim, which even if they're not successful, costs us money to defend. And so, it's just cleaner because we don't need the parcel until then, just to say, okay, we'll close when you're off the property.
Sure.
So, as you're considering this, we also want to make you aware that this is a route that is eligible for municipal state aid. So, eligible costs, as we're building the road, we would be submitting for reimbursement through that. Also, we're looking at funds collected through development assessments in the southwest growth area will contribute to, you know, ultimately paying for this. And then the portion of the property that we mentioned earlier that we'd be looking to sell to Traditions for their use as well and their development. So, that's, those are sort of the mix of funds that we're looking at putting towards this. Do you expect to see that if we're proceeding here, there was a future bond sale that Noel would be bringing in front of you, kind of in a similar way, that we'd be reimbursing ourselves through that bond issue? And then, you know, using these funds to to pay that in the future?
But that likely wouldn't be until late June, July timeframe.
Right.
So, of that 10-acre, roughly 10-acre site, is it a couple acres maybe sold back to Traditions on that top part? You know, Matt?
Do you know the approximate size of that?
You can just guess.
Yeah, it's a couple, it's probably less than five acres total, but not, I mean, portions of it are really used for development, but like Matt said, the vast majority of it is to satisfy their development stormwater needs, so.
So, we should get some money back on that, too.
Yeah, I think there's a couple things that we'll have to consider. We still have right-of-way acquisitions that we need to purchase as a part of the Savannah Way Collector Road. Portions of the outlets and things that need to be dedicated or acquired for the road extension in and of itself, those need still to be satisfied as well.
Did it like appraise so, I feel like it appraised, I'm not an appraiser, but it seemed like it appraised really high for anything I could find for market value. Did it appraise higher because that business?
Yes.
Sits on it? Okay, that makes sense. But when I looked at it just from the packet, I was like, this seems really high.
If it wasn't, if it was just a residential home in the barn, it would have been a lot lower.
Okay, that that makes way more sense now.
Yeah, he he had really established business there and actually was, you know, just sort of a side note, he he had a nationally recognized business.
Yes, there, there was a lot of big-time celebrities and racers that came there on a regular basis that you never knew.
Yeah, most people probably had no idea what happened on that property, but if if you were involved in the world of racing, you probably had some connection with that property.
Interesting.
Yes, I think the other thing that's unique with the property here that was considered in the appraisal is the use of the property.
Right.
Of the land and being able to, if you were to to replace that, find a location that you could have both a residential home and industrial use co-located on the same property is damn near impossible. So, you know, that.
That's one of those challenges when you annex township areas, is it sort of comes with whatever land use was allowed to exist there previously. And you do see some of these unique things like that, where you'll see businesses, industrial businesses are on residential properties.
I mean, that business was, is there 35, 40 years, Luke, at least?
Yeah.
That, I mean, that I'm aware of, and I don't know how long before that, so it's been there a long time.
They're not looking to repeat, though. If you're saying it's impossible, they're not looking, they're just looking for the, to put the business somewhere else.
Right.
Yes.
They're just relocating the business.
Yep.
Yep.
Because the husband.
They're they're. But that's kind of the ones you got to look through, right? When you're taking that valuation into consideration.
That makes way more sense, the valuation. I was like, that seems like really high compared to what.
So, with that, staff's recommendation is that we would proceed with this, that we ought, or that the mayor and Matt be authorized to enter into the purchase agreement, and then that we end up, you know, executing that. So, the motion before you is to authorize the mayor and city administrator to execute the purchase agreement for a property located at 4255 Creek Road. Any other questions or anything?
All right, discussion or questions for Nate? I think we've had a fair share of conversation. Everybody good? All right, with that, I'd entertain a motion again to authorize the mayor and city administrator to execute a purchase agreement for the property located at 4255 Creek Road.
So moved.
Motion by Hubbard.
Second.
Second by Hatfield to, again, to execute the purchase agreement on the Creek Road property. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Moves on item 9C, appoint acting pro tem for calendar year 2020.
So, Mayor and Councilmember, the item in front of you tonight is something that we're required by statute to take up every first meeting of the year. There's no statutory requirement that mayor pro tem position rotate amongst the council members. In fact, we had one council member that was mayor pro tem for like 30 years, I think. Bob Lindo was for for quite a while. But we did have a policy that was developed several years ago that basically had it set up where you would actually see it rotate from year to year. Currently, Councilmember Wong is serving as the mayor pro tem, and then it looks at basically which, it looks first at seniority, since everybody sort of came at the same time. Then you look at which ward had it, it was longest ago that 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 ward actually had the mayor pro tem position. So, that would actually, since Councilmember Schultz had it the the previous year, that would actually make it Ward 1, which based on our policy would be Councilmember Gra would be for 2020 if that's a direction that you guys decide to go.
All right, there we got it all laid out. Discussion.
Makes sense.
Yeah, we went through quite a process a while back when there was, so this is a good system, it just takes a lot to lay it out, especially when everybody came in at the same time, you know, or close to it, so.
What's your schedule for 2020?
I'm I'm going to tell you already, I'm missing the last February meeting already. That's one, and there might be two there anyway.
Gotcha.
So, you're taking over right away.
Get ready for that gavel.
All right, if if there's not any further discussion, I'd entertain a motion to appoint John, Councilmember Gra as the acting mayor for the City of Chaska, calendar year 2020.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Hatfield.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hubbard. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Pose same sign. Motion carries, moves us to bells. Anyone?
Yep.
Go ahead, Mike.
Okay, so, page 1, Action Battery Wholesalers. There's a bunch of batteries listed there for different facilities. I was wondering, what type of batteries are those anyway?
Probably the backup generator.
Those are the backup generator batteries.
Okay. Okay, page 4, Braun Intertek Corporation. There was testing of pond bottom at.
Still my.
Which pond?
I have that question. White Oak.
Which one? White Oak?
White Oak neighborhood. And what are they test for? Like, what is, I just, what is that? We're required as a part of removal of the material that comes out of the stormwater ponds to see what it is that we can actually do with it. So, testing in advance is one of the things we have to do to just, we'll figure that out.
Is it like a spot check thing, or is it something we have to?
It's, it's just part of our maintenance operations that we do part of our pond.
You have to do it on every pond that you do it. It's not just a spot check. So, you know, part of our maintenance of our ponds is they obviously get filled with silt, and so in order to keep their depth, you have to go and you have to remove material from them. And what they're really looking for is where do you have to dump this material? If it's contaminated material, it has to go to a different dump location than if it's non-contaminated material.
Gotcha. I'm really hoping this upgrade of Munis makes this thing so you can see more of those tags. So, page 11, Graybar Electric Company. What is a terminating tent?
Terminating tent is.
Graybar is electric.
Yeah, so terminate, terminating tent would.
Come on, Mr. MPA, spit it out.
It's, so there's, there's termination of of actual services at, you know, basically when it comes back into the substations, it's actually the the covering that actually covers the termination of the the wires when they come together. It's a piece of equipment.
Okay.
I don't know how better to describe it.
I figured you made it up, it sounded good.
No, it's, I mean, it's, it's a piece of equipment.
Okay.
As long as we're on page 11, I just got to make a fun comment that if Nate Slamp starts slam dunking the basketball court, we wouldn't have to replace the B-ball rim. I associate that with you, you pulled a Shaquille O'Neal and tore down the rim, but.
Yeah.
Nate the Shack, right? Let's see, pages 11, oh, sorry, 12 and 13, there is something for halt tour and charter. I'm assuming is that was for a lodge program?
Let's see here. The Ames Theater, Ames Theater in Burnsville.
Yep.
So, that's a guessing.
Seniors.
Yeah, so that's one where we collect revenue for the program and then we hire the bus company to take them.
Okay, just wanted to make sure that's what I thought it was for. Then, page 13, Intermedia Systems Group, sound system for Aqua at Aqua State something. Where was that going?
This, I believe, is actually for the.
Would it be the community center for Aqua Aerobic?
Yeah, I see, it's for programming classes. They do aqua aerobics and they. Yeah, I see, it's for programming classes. They, they do aqua aerobics in the, in the pool. And so it's a sound, no, it's a sound system that they use in the pool area so that, you know, people can hear what they're supposed to be doing.
Oh.
Cause the aquatics are horrible in there.
You mean the acoustics?
The aquatics are good. The acoustics are bad.
Acoustics have struggled.
There's no water in there. Okay. What's, so this page fourteen, Patrick Hawkins, number one sixteen cutting edges from, what are those?
I'm assuming it's the plows. That was my assumption. I saw that on the next page.
I mean, it could be, I don't, it could be a road grader, it could be.
Yeah, it could be any piece of equipment, but basically you have to, you have to redo those blades every once in a while.
Okay.
It could be for cut nice. I, I don't, I've seen that before in there.
It's on the next page under snow bucket cutting edges, so I figured it's why they're on the same line.
Yeah. And then page fourteen, Code, Code Drew Equipment. Those are Angler PRV Station.
Yep, so that's a, that's a pressure revelt, reduction valve station. So that's equipment that we needed to be able to actually put that valve in for pressure reduction.
Okay.
Remember when Matt was talking to us about that tower?
That was the.
There was a PRV valve in there.
The PRV is the one that replaced that tower that's, we're taking that.
Well, this, this isn't the one that replaces that.
Oh, but this is something like.
Yeah. We have multiple pressure reduction stations in the city because of the fact that we have such a steep downhill. If you live downtown, if you didn't have those.
It's just.
You could, what's that movie where the guy gets lifted off the toilet when, when it flushes?
What?
Caddyshack? That's the kind of pressure you'd see.
Nice.
That's amazing.
It's a, it's a feature, right?
Yeah.
Okay, pages fifteen and twenty-two. On page fifteen, there's, you know, a new, you know, new vehicle that was purchased, right? And then on pages, page twenty-two, there's two new, two new Mack trucks that were purchased. I was wondering, do we have a competitive bid process?
We go through the state bidding process.
Okay, we use the state's process. Okay, cool. I just wanted, I just wanted to double. Okay. In page eighteen, there's Minnesota Department of Health, and I saw this water supply service. It looks like connection or con something, and it seems strange that why would Department of Health be associated with the repayment for water supply?
So, well, the Department of Health is involved with our water system all the time. We have to submit tests to them each month for our, you know, for testing our water system. Let's see here. That's our Department of Health. Yeah, this, this is the, well, I'll find out exactly what it is, but the Department of Health with our water system, they basically, they do, we have to submit all of our testing each, each month on a, you know, on a regular basis to be able to prove that we fall within state standards for, for water quality.
Okay.
But I'll find specifically what that is.
Yeah. So on page twenty, there's one for state of Minnesota. It's third quarter fiscal year. So I'm wondering, is, are we paying, what are we paying to the state? Is that taxes or something, or?
Uh, where's this one at?
Yeah, this is page twenty. It's for state of Minnesota. It's a third quarter fiscal year and is cut off from theirs to something. It's like eighty-nine hundred.
Want to get back to us?
Yeah, I can get, I mean, there's a number of things we pay to the state. I mean, that could be anything from our child support that we have to put into, I mean, there's, but I'll, I'll find out that one.
Yep.
That's okay. And the last one here. On electronic payments, page three, there is, I noticed there's a P-card, this is December twenty-nineteen P-card purchases for like twenty-nine thousand eight hundred and twenty dollars. What's the like review or approval process for P-card purchases? Because my presumption.
Talk about.
Yeah, because my presumption is this is for like repayment of the P-card, it's of the, you know, the purchases itself, but there's probably individual purchases associated with that twenty-nine thousand, right?
Twenty-nine thousand represents the total that we pay to US Bank who manages our P-card program. Each employee who uses a city P-card has to comply with the rules of the P-card program. So they make purchases that are in compliance. Those are submitted each month by the employee. They're reviewed by finance and go through the approval process like any other bill then at the same time. So they do have to document what the intent of the purchase was, the receipt for it. And then we do review to make sure that that receipt, if it's for events, complies with what the policy says the P-card can be used for.
So it goes through the standard, like, just like an expense process or an expense approval process, like their manager or, and then finance and.
Yep. We have a workflow process where it starts with the employee, it gets reviewed by the department head, it's reviewed by finance, it's reviewed by Matt, and then it goes through our regular accounts payable workflow.
And then this is the repayment back to the bank against all of whatever that charge was.
Yep. Each month, they have an annual charge that is automatically swept, that we have these internal control procedures in place to validate what is the amount, and if there's any disputed charges or any issues, we're able to dispute those and follow up with them.
So is the P-card from an employee perspective, is that effectively just like a credit card, or is it?
It is a, it is a credit card issued by Visa. It is with the employee's name, and it's for use by that employee and that employee only.
Cool. So is the accountability to trail against all of that, see if there's ever a question? Cool. Cool. That's all I've got. Thank you.
I just had one.
Yep, go ahead.
Page twenty-four, have you finished taking your note?
Okay. Twenty-four?
Yep. Fireworks.
Yep.
So is that prepaying for July of next year, or of this year?
We've done that every year because we get, is it ten or fifteen percent more show?
Something like, yeah.
Yeah, we, we get it, we get, if we pay before a certain date, we get more show for free.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I just, I noticed that because it's the invoice dates for July fourth, which may not realize what it was for, but it was in the future, so I was just curious on why we see it now.
That brings up a really good question because under the last meeting, you follow up on the torch and liabilities, and there is an exemption against torch and liabilities that did not cover for fireworks.
Yep, we have to do a special policy for it.
Okay, and so that's something, I just, I guess we have, I just haven't noticed or seen it, so that, but that is in another place.
Yep.
Okay, cool.
Yeah, so we, we basically have to list on our insurance application any fireworks show that we're gonna do as a city or have to add that on when we know we're gonna add one onto there. But on, in addition to that, we actually have the fireworks provider actually list us as additionally insured on their insurance policy.
Yep, so we either, so we either do that or get our own endorsement or.
We do both.
We do both. Okay, excellent.
Yep.
Go ahead.
Okay. On, mm-hmm, I have a few. Page fifteen, assistance hauling snow, is that like, I feel like we asked about it last winter, so maybe I'm repeating, but is that like pretty normal that we would get assistance?
Yeah, so we don't have, in order for us to be able to haul in one night, we don't have enough equipment to be able to haul all of our snow. And so if you watch the operations, they'll have, I don't know, five, four or five trucks from a private contractor that will be part of the convoy that will actually come in. The snow gets blown in there, they go and dump it. We just don't have enough employees or dump trucks to do that.
Okay, that makes sense.
It's capacity because there are usually tandem axles.
Yeah, there's.
We don't own tandem axles. I mean, we were doing that back in the seventies when I was working.
Yeah, they're, they're typically can hold at least twice as much snow as our trucks.
Oh, tandem axles, now I get it.
Yes.
At first I was like, I don't know what tandem axle is, but now I'm, I'm getting it. Yeah.
Bigger single axle, single straight truck.
Um, this is, I think I know this one. It's just more maybe humorous. Page twenty-one, I'm gonna assume that bed, space knives is the same as a bed, no space knives, which is like a plow truck thing, like we're not getting knives for beds, right?
Yes.
There should just not be a spacer.
That would be, that would be correct.
Okay.
There's still kind of bed knife.
That's, you know what?
I think it's for plow trucks, like the pieces that drop in the back.
No, that's for MTI. That's Toro. It's probably for.
Yeah, bed knives are actually, they're for golf equipment.
Oh, well, I just want to make sure we weren't buying knives for any beds.
Our mowers and things like that.
Oh, okay.
Because MTI is Toro, and that would be something else. Wasn't sure what they call knives of other.
This is the, this is the time of year that they do all their maintenance on their, the equipment from the year before so that they're ready for the upcoming season.
This has been one of those things that great if it was categorized.
Yeah, yeah.
Next one, or are you good?
Um, I'm just, I have to find, make sure I don't have any.
I have one.
That's fine.
Yeah, you go ahead and ask yours because I don't think, I, I think I, I had the fireworks one, but I don't think I have any other.
Page five, the Arboretum Area Transportation. I'm assuming it's the study.
Yep.
Is that like, is that a shared cost?
Each of the cities have a, a piece of it. The majority of it is covered by Carver County.
Okay, all right. I just was curious if that was the case. That's.
I, I had that one, too.
Yeah. I sort of wish we weren't paying anything for it.
What is that study cost if we're paying?
Oh, it's, it's gotta be.
Our portion of contribution is around twenty-five thousand. Carver County and the state are really bearing the bulk of it. I don't have a number off the top of my head, but it is, I don't want to misquote, but it's, it's a big number.
Because wasn't the, based on the joint powers agreement from last summer, we did on this, I think that was, were we like six percent or something like that? Yeah.
Yeah, and, yeah, it's, so they, they basically tap into the cities in which these projects go through because there is a cost-sharing policy with the county for any county road. But part of it is actually doing the, the studies, too, to begin with.
Okay.
All right.
That's it. I'm good. Yep.
Yep.
John, you were good?
I am.
Okay. With that, I would entertain a motion to pay the bills.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Wong.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hatfield to pay the bills. Discussion. Hearing none, Nate, call roll.
Councilmember Hatfield?
Yes.
Councilmember Hubbard?
Yes.
Councilmember Wong?
Yep.
Councilmember Grau?
Yes.
Marijuana shooter.
Yes. All right, moves us to other business. Councilmember Hatfield.
Um, no, nothing besides that I just want to thank all our plow crews because I drive through five cities to get to work, and Chaska is always perfect, and I'm always very glad to be driving in just Chaska. When I have to go to the other towns that may or may not be bigger than ours, I get sad. So thanks to our plow crews for being like literally amazing. And yeah, that's all I have.
I agree. I've gone to other cities and it's like, really? This is the best you can do? So we, we are fortunate. I got good crews.
We're not dealing with snow removal four days later.
Right.
I mean, that's.
Or just never, like.
Or never. I mean, the reality is, is when you get into Minneapolis, St. Paul, part of it is they just don't have anywhere to put it. But, I mean, what we deal with here is nothing compared to the, as you get closer into the central city.
Yep.
Uh, I went to both of the traffic studies that had happened before Christmas. The Arboretum one and, and then the Highway ten traffic study, sorry, I'm kind of away from the mic. And both very interesting ideas kind of being proposed. The Arboretum one, kind of the most interesting because, you know, they kind of hit all kind of the areas around, and I got a chance to talk to the director of the Arboretum and, and so it'll, it'll be interesting to see what they end up deciding on some of those, kind of some of those key areas. And then with Highway ten, just kind of nice to see kind of what's gonna be coming up along the bend. But the information is on, oh, the county website, right?
Yes.
Yes, for both of them. So, yeah. Otherwise, I was gonna say something. Oh, I went to the, I used Southwest, we, Southwest Transit was here just the other day, or just last meeting, and used the, the bus ride option for the Arboretum for their night light show.
That worked pretty good.
It was fantastic. It was really, really fantastic service.
Considering there was the.
It looked like.
Saturday before Christmas, I've never seen such a long line on Highway five to get into the Arboretum. It went back.
It was incredible.
Like to Bluff Creek Elementary.
Yeah, it, it, it looked like, you know, was it Field of Dreams? Like when the cars at the end will like come. That's what it looked like, you know? And to be able to not even have to worry about it, you know, like getting in. I was telling Nate not getting in and everything. So just really valuable and just really, really great. That's it, that's it for me.
I gotta find it. I have it here. Len, I, I ran into Len that night before Christmas, and he sent me this. We took a total of thirteen, fourteen hundred riders to the Arboretum. Round trips was twenty-eight hundred.
Mm-hmm. I believe it.
That's, so that's on the bus. All right, Councilmember Wong.
Only a couple of things. I also attended the Arboretum Area Transportation Plan Open House and the Highway ten corridor study along with Councilor Hubbard, coincidentally.
I was there.
And you were there, too.
I'll just publish my calendar if anyone wants to see where I'm going.
And I also takeaways, too, where I think that there's, you know, especially in Eighty-second Street, there's a potential for a lot of change for the residents up there. So, you know, I, I think that, you know, that'll be a very interesting change and certainly something where I'm hoping that, you know, they can come to a, you know, a meaningful compromise that will kind of work for everyone there because I know it's, you know, sensitive and what was, what's there today is gonna be very different than what will be there at the end of this project. So, you know, I'm hoping everyone come to mutual agreements there. But there's still a long ways to go with that. Likewise, interestingly enough, the Highway cor- ten corridor stay is interesting because that's such a, it's, it's a very, it's a corridor we don't really talk about much in the city here, right? We typically focus on like Forty-one because, you know, that's the big one that everyone goes north and south on. But, but ten actually cuts through, you know, this is the, the other direction of.
Ten's probably our biggest issue that's been unaddressed.
Yeah.
And it's going to be as the community's less grow.
I, I think, you know, we've talked about sort of, you know, what are those things that are upcoming issues that, you know, because we, you know, I shared in the bi-weekly about how now we almost have all the funding for Highway Forty-one. So that's pretty, that's gonna be pretty much done.
Yeah.
You know, and everything else on Forty-one has been really sort of taken care of. Angler is an issue. And it's gonna continue to be an issue.
Yeah. And I think there's, you know, there's a lot of good discussion, and I'm glad that they're, you know, reaching out to actively solicit input on preferences from, from the members of the community. But I think that as a council, we do need to really kind of have some attention focused on that because it is, to some degree, almost as much as arterial corridor as, you know, as Forty-one is. But we can't neglect that because so many people take that to get to Forty-one or to get to Two Twelve.
Well, and not to mention that the Carver County sees it as their, their primary east-west corridor going into the future.
Absolutely, yeah.
I don't, I don't think we've been, Nicole, I don't know what your word was. We have forgotten about that. We've talked about that, that that's, I mean, our last council, another council member lived in that area. And it's a challenge that without a doubt, a good share of the day. And if you really take that section from Bavaria Road, probably to.
Park Ridge.
Yep.
To Park Ridge, probably even past Park Ridge, because you're coming up the other way. And then, and then when you get out to Jonathan Carver Parkway, that whole intersection, that, these, they're failing. I mean, there, there is no doubt about it, and that's what this study is really all about, is to figure it out. But the problem is, is that the corridor in our city is all built out. And there's just not a lot of room to do things. So that's, that's the big thing is looking for what are, what are the ideas? What are thoughts of the people that drive it?
Yeah, and it's interesting because also, you know, our fire station's also on that corridor, too, which means that accessibility, you know, as the performance of that corridor deteriorates, it also directly impacts the ability of fire services, police services to, as well as just commute and everything else. So, you know, just, yeah, I, I think it's probably good for us to kind of maybe renew some attention to it that, you know, you know, in the light of all the other stuff going on. Other thing, only other thing is that, you know, I'm looking forward to that, that Martin Luther King Celebration Breakfast on Monday the twentieth at the event center. So that should be good. I think there's, they have a pretty prominent guest speaker as well planned, so that should be.
Dr. Johnson, Dr. Johnson.
Yeah. So that is all I've got.
And that, just while we're on that, that starts at eight o'clock.
Yep.
It's really only an hour long. It's really only an hour long, and it's open to the public, anyone can attend, there's no cost, so, um-
The only thing Southwest Chamber requests is that you just RSVP with them, so that they have enough food.
Oh.
Oh, okay.
And that's with the chamber.
Yeah, that's sponsored by the Human Rights Commission and the Chamber, working together. So, in addition to Dr. Johnson, his keynote, there's also the high school speech team will be doing, a couple of students will be doing a couple of readings from Martin Luther King, speech, you know, some of his work speeches. High school jazz band will play a couple of numbers, and then also the Human Rights Award will be given out, and Barbara Kohat was chosen as the recipient this year, so she'll be receiving that.
Are you the emcee this year, with?
I'm not the emcee. I'm the guy who stands back.
I mean, yeah, you'd be great.
I think you'd do a great job, yeah.
So, they do want an RSVP? They don't say that anywhere on their thing?
There's going to be some pastries there from Red Bench and El Paisa, I think it's El Paisano, if I'm saying that right, it's the Hispanic bakery that's across the street located in the city square west block. So, those will be provided, it's kind of a limited number, we'll, we'll purchase those things ahead of time, and, you know, hopefully, hopefully there's enough, but juice and coffee as well. Dunn Brothers pitches in for the coffee, so, but if you want to RSVP-
I know, I saw it on their website.
Oh, was it?
Yeah, I saw it on their website, that they asked just RSVP. I'm only doing what they ask us to do. That's fair enough.
Kayla, when you have, when you, Hatfield, when you RSVP, put two down, and I'll-
Okay.
I'm telling that, yeah.
All right.
Uh, are you done, sir?
I'm done, thank you.
I have two things, just a reminder of the Big Chill, that's at Fireman's Park this Saturday from twelve to three. That was in the evening in the past, right? Are they moving it in the morning? I was curious on that, I'm, I might be confusing it with the different.
No, that, you're right, that was in the evening before.
Yeah, I remember it being dark.
I was going to say, I was just going to say, you got the wrong time, it's in the evening.
Yeah, it's twelve to three, so they must have changed it, which I think makes some sense, because it's warmer in the day, because I think we've had some cold nights, especially last year.
Yeah.
But I, you know, sometimes blend my activities together, but yeah, it is twelve to three PM, Chaska Fireman's Park, outdoor rink, bring your ice skates, because they're not rental, but DJ skate, games, hot chocolate, fun time had by all, so, it's a good thing. Uh, and then the other thing that, just because I find it interesting how sometimes we're always not informed at the national level, but also, I think this topic, I actually had a conversation with Nate not too long ago about this topic, but prior to this council, there was a conversation about the city of Chaska's tobacco age, and there's some conversation about raising it to twenty-one, and it's hard for a city to do that, because it's a city and you could drive a little bit ways, um, so, yeah, and it's done now, right? So, I just say that, because I think I've had conversations with people, and it kind of went under the radar, I think there's a-
I'm surprised how little attention is given.
Exactly, I don't think a lot of people realize that it went to age twenty-one.
It was the weirdest thing, I think I was listening to the radio one day, and they said that, and I was like, really?
I walked into the Holiday and saw the signs up, and then I listened to all these new bills, and, and they never even mentioned it on the local news. It's bizarre.
There was a lot of confusion even over the start day, like, when it was going to be in effect.
Well, and they're saying Minnesota hasn't adopted it, so it's federally, you're, you're not legal, but Minnesota you can, but then you can get in trouble with federally, yeah. So, everybody's going, ah, no, we're not doing it.
Yeah, it was odd, because there was a ton of attention put to communities, you know, whether or not they'd consider that, but it just came out of nowhere.
So, that's why I brought it up, because that was kind of my reaction too, it's like, oh.
So, so, here's the new one, I just, I, I got a little buzz here, St. Louis Park just-
Vaping, did they pass it?
They passed that they won't sell any vaping products now, they're saying.
Yeah, I saw that come up, and I thought, whoa.
Like any, to anybody.
Yeah, they banned it.
They banned, they banned the sale of vaping-
The ordinance was being discussed tonight.
And whatever the fluids for, I don't know, whatever you call it.
Like the, yeah.
Yeah. They banned it.
It's interesting, because that's kind of following the same model of like the, the public smoking in restaurants and things, where like if a few cities start doing it, there's a domino effect.
Yeah, I think that's, well, that's usually the initiative with these things, that's how they kind of strategically go about it.
That is all I had.
All right. Matt?
No.
Spooky. How about over there? Nate?
Uh, sorry, I was typing notes. I have nothing to add.
All right. Just a couple of things real quick. It, it was brought up that we got the funding, so we got a three-point, three-point-five million grant from TED, which is Transportation Economic Development, which is helping now, we are like two million dollars short on our funding for forty-one, which would probably put us right in the mix now to go ahead and get funding, so, that's a, that was a big grant to help us, get us over that, that final hump, and twenty-twenty-two probably construction, so it'd be from the bridge to-
Basically Walnut. Is that right? Walnut Court, Walnut Court?
Oh, it's the top of the hill?
Yeah.
Okay.
Walnut's the top of the hill, where he entered into Cooper's.
Bottom of the hill.
Oh, is that Walnut Court too?
Yeah.
Oh, I thought, Walnut Court's that little street that goes up.
Yeah, it's the, the one on the bottom.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
All right. And then is the Hawk system in there for that?
I think, yeah, yeah.
That'll be good, and so, so that'll have the same type of crosswalk system that we have on sixty-one to, to make that safer, because that is a scary spot.
So, going from like where the corner where AT&T-
Going from Cooper's into the park?
Okay.
Yes.
Oh, good.
AT&T into the park. So, that, that, that will be good.
Happening.
I still hold my breath when I go through that intersection. So, that was huge, I don't know who was behind, oh, Nate, Nate Matt Clark, Kevin Ringwall, while bigging and getting that, so that, that is huge.
And then one of our local residents from Bolton and Mink, Eric.
Eric Johnson?
Johnson, he's a local Chaska resident, so shout out to him, he's put a ton of work into this.
Oh, awesome.
Yeah.
Awesome. So, um, the Big Chill, we don't need Martin Luther King, we really hit everything. We have EDA meeting immediately following, it'll be a pretty short one, Ted Grant, and then also for anyone, we do have the process out for the hiring of a new police chief, and that runs through January, or-
January thirty-first.
Open January third, so goes to the thirty-first?
Yep.
So, um, so we're moving forward in the process to hire a new chief, another big department head to fill and, and a public figure, so hopefully we get some great candidates, and, and I hope we have to make a really hard decision to pick a good one, so that means we got a lot of good candidates, so it'll be exciting. And then lastly, from me, is, this is the crazy meetings now, so January twentieth, there's not a meeting because of Martin Luther King, so January we'll be meeting the first and the fourth Monday, and the same thing happens in February, the seventeenth, it's President's Day, so again, we'll be meeting on the first and the fourth Monday, so don't be looking for us on the third Monday the next two weeks. With that, I'm going to throw out last call. All right, then I look for motion to adjourn and move into EDA.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Wong. Second by Councilmember Hubbard to adjourn. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. We're adjourned. Michael, how much time?
Uh, sixty seconds.
Forty?
Yeah.
Up here, somebody, jump on it. Good evening, and we will open the Chaska Economic Development Authority meeting for Monday, January sixth, two thousand twenty, at nine fifty-six. We'll call the meeting to order. Nate, we call roll.
Commissioner Hatfield?
Here.
Commissioner Hubbard?
Here.
Commissioner Wong?
Here.
Commissioner Grau?
Here.
President Winchell?
Here.
Moves us to item three, adopting the agenda, corrections or additions, if not, then entertain a motion.
Motion.
Uh, I have a motion by Commissioner Hatfield, second by Commissioner Grau to adopt the agenda. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign.